We have a quorum present, and therefore I am going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, which will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are having some technological issues, and so we're going to be doing voting the old-fashioned way in a lot of things, old-school, as the clerk put it before we started. Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Would you please call the roll for the Douglas County Board of Equalization?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft is present via Zoom but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item A is the approval of the minutes from the Board of Equalization meeting held last week. Item B is to set September 29th as a date for hearing uncertified assessment correction. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Rogers and Morgan to approve items A and B. Are there any questions or comments to either of these items? If not, however you want to do it, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions D through N. I have a motion and a second to approve resolutions A, D through N, and adjourn. Questions or comments? Mr. Goodwelly, good morning.
Yes, Mike Goodwelly, Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds office. The only question I have really is on item agenda L, and this is a corollary to what we talked about with the claims for destroyed real property about a month ago. And the way that law is set up, people apply to get a change in their value because they allege some kind of destruction of their property. And in the first instance, the board actually determines the value, okay, whether we make a recommendation or not. And that's what you guys did about a month ago, when you determined that because the law seems to require physical damage as opposed to some sort of diminution of profits or market damage, that there would not be changes to value. Well, seven of these are in item L, and they have all protested, because the law gives them the right to protest back to the board after you set the value in the first place. And so seven of these, these are protests of your determination on these properties. And my concern is, when it talks about set the 2020 real property valuations for protests of assessed value, I think maybe that doesn't quite adequately describe what's going on here. What you are doing here in this item is ruling on those protests. Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Is there any reason that this needs to be done today? What would happen if we laid this item over for a week?
I'm not sure when they filed the protest, but I think the board has 30 days to render a determination.
Correct.
From the time they get the protest. So I'm not, I don't know if Catherine Hall can help us when we got these protests in. I don't know if there's an available time window to lay them over. My suggestion is, you know, we argued this out quite at length about a month ago, and it seems to me that if you meant it the first time, you ought to mean it this time.
Thank you.
This is Catherine. And yes, the protests were received September 8th, and the board has to take action within 30 days. So you could lay it over until next week's meeting, I believe. The referee, we did proceed as we did last year with these. These are a newish issue with the property damage. This was new in the statute last year. So we're mimicking the regular protest process, and these protests were referred to a referee for review. And in all seven cases, the referee recommended dismissing them and retaining the assessed value for 2020.
In light of that, it sounds like we're ready to...
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, I was going to read that it was September 8th that we received them, but also just to also remind folks that the majority, if not all of these, were due, their claim was to COVID-related issues, and so that's...
All right. Thank you. Clerk H.
Dan H. County Clerk Catherine Hall covered everything I was going to say.
Very good. All right. All right, well, then we are back to voting on all of the items, including that one and adjournment. Further questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners. Could we please have the roll called again?
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft is present via Zoom but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item A, approval of minutes from last week's meeting. Item B, claims for payment approval through September 22nd. What is the pleasure of the board? I have a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve one A and B. Questions or comments to either of these items? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Yeah. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have on here items A through N. Is there anything in here that anybody would like pulled out for individual attention? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve the consent agenda as printed. Again, I'll ask, there's a lot of items here, nothing in here that anybody wants pulled out for individual attention.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. We had some items come up just before the meeting, and maybe there was some things we need to clear up, so I guess I'll...
Good morning, Teresa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. I'm going to ask you to allow Dan H. to amend the resolutions on items J, K, and L. The amendment would simply be, the resolutions document that those three items went to the Board of Trustees first. However, the Board of Trustees did not vote on these yesterday. So I would simply ask this board, in approving these, to allow Dan H. to delete that portion that says they've already been approved by the Board of Trustees. That way, the resolution will read true.
Thank you for the clarification. The Board of Trustees did meet yesterday. We did not have a quorum present physically, and so we were not able to take action. So I appreciate that. I would hope that could be taken as a friendly amendment.
Yes, and just to note, we will have a Board of Trustees meeting before our meeting next week to take these out, because the Board of Trustees will be voting on them as well.
But we can go ahead and vote on them today.
Yes, so it's my understanding that Commissioner Borgeson is correct. Board of Trustees will vote on them next week on Tuesday. However, the resolutions read now that they were already voted upon, and so I simply wanted the resolutions to read true.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, and that's accepted as a friendly amendment for items J, K, and L. Okay, further discussion? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes, I just noticed. Does that include N?
Yes.
J, K, L, and N?
Oh.
As N and as a Nancy, because that was one that was yesterday as well.
So that should be...
Teresa may not...
One second. I didn't note that for N, but...
That should be subject to the same friendly amendment.
Yeah, to the same friendly amendment.
All right.
It does not, the resolution for N does not contain the language in the resolved paragraph stating that it had already gone to BOT. So it is just J, K, and L.
All right, thank you.
You're talking on the wrong microphone.
Oh. Oh, try sitting over here. Okay, thank you. Not that anybody really wanted to hear me. Could we please go ahead and vote on the consent agenda as amended?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on any item that is not on the agenda? My, we're going quickly today. We will move on to the CARES Act updates. Where is Joe Lorenz?
Go ahead, Karen.
Oh. Good morning, Joe. We have two action items for the board's consideration today.
CARES Act, yeah. Yes, these are two items, groups that came forward to the CARES Act Committee last Monday. CARES Act Committee went through it, recommended that they be passed. The first one is for county court. It's audiovisual equipment for three courtrooms in the amount of $45,000. And the second one is to reimburse dot com for expenses incurred to date. Primarily, they redeployed people to enable the county employees to telework from home, which is a reimbursement of that, it's an eligible expense under the CARES Act. So those are the two items that we have this week on the agenda.
Is that for both items? Okay. Was that a second? Our motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve both items for the CARES Act, A1 and A2. Questions or comments to either of these items? Then, Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Item B under presentations is a report from the county purchasing agent on an emergency purchase of COVID tests made by the Douglas County Health Center during the period of time since the last regularly scheduled county board meeting. Good morning, Eric.
Do you have a place to put my mic right now?
We welcome the county's purchasing agent, Eric Carlson.
Yeah, I've been hiding in my house for the last six months, first time at the board. Great to see you all.
We've missed you.
Sure. Okay, Eric Carlson, Douglas County Purchasing Agent. Great to see you all. And this, I'll keep this fairly brief, but I think this is a good opportunity to kind of explain to you from a process perspective, since we just had an approval of CARES Act expenditures, that the process is, we get the vetting, and then you folks will approve the expenditures of the CARES Act money. That's step one. But obviously, if the expenditure is over a threshold that we normally would do formal bidding, you've also, as you'll see in this packet here, I'll get to it in just a moment, I could add myself, we had a situation come up in the last week, as you, I think, discussed last week's board meeting, about the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services requiring testing. So Erin Nelson from the Douglas County Health Center came to me and said, "We need to get these rapid tests ordered, obviously, so we can meet the requirements of this." And obviously, as a long-term care facility, they're required to follow it, and she released her policy and to support that. I think they had some tests in mind, available, but we had to get some ordered right away from a vendor that could ship them in a timely fashion. So with the policy in place, she came to me, and just I'll point briefly on this, we had the resolution initially where you declared the local emergency or declaration of a disaster. And then this is the resolution 0157, adopted on March 17th. Followed by that, under the local declaration, of course, for the COVID-19 global pandemic, we also had a local disaster purchasing declaration for resolution number 0167, basically contemplating that there may be times where you, as a board, could waive the formal bidding process because of the emergency and not being able to take the time to do the normal processes, obviously, because we need to make sure we're in compliance with the Nebraska Purchasing Act. So this allows, or given me basically the power, so to speak, to go and help departments in the case of an emergency, to go ahead and get the emergency purchases done. This is our policy that we released at the same time. I'll just touch on it briefly. Basically, it says, one-time purchases, you know, for these critical situations. In this case, with the declared disaster and emergency, there could be potential other multiple subsequent purchases, so we're relying on number two in this case, that we would need to purchase these kits and may have to buy some in the future as well. I'm just going to move down to the end here, because there are a couple sections here. Normally, we'd like to be able to take those purchases, like we did a few weeks ago, to the board, so you guys could approve those emergency purchases, waive the purchasing act, and then we get the order placed. While we, this came in between the last board meeting and today, so we're relying on B, which basically allows me to go ahead and move forward and help them with the purchase in between board meetings. And part of that requirement is that I then report to you that these purchases have occurred, and that's why I'm here today. So with this policy that was in place, and these COVID kits that need to be purchased, Erin came to me, and this is the form that I require. She said, referencing, of course, the resolution of declared emergency, she needed to order these COVID tests in the amount of approximately $130,000. That's the cost of the kits plus the shipping. We did try to find a couple other vendors, they just didn't have them available or could not ship them in a timely fashion. So this is the one vendor that we found. So I was comfortable with that and approved the purchase, as you can see here. And so we're in the process of getting that order process to the vendor. This is just the attached quote that's related to this emergency purchase. And as we go forward, certainly if you need more information from me when I make these reports, we'd like to probably, in all best cases, try to have it in front of you, and then you make the approval, we place the order, then everything's all kind of right in front of you. But in these cases where we have to make a purchase and it's between board meetings, this is generally the process that I'm going to follow to make you aware of it, to meet compliance with not only the State Purchasing Act, but also the emergency declaration and our emergency purchasing policy. Any questions today?
That sounds too efficient for government.
Well, we try.
No, that's a good plan. I mean, in such cases where we do have to respond quickly, but that you catch us up to speed, sounds good.
Yeah, and I can certainly formalize, you know, any sort of reporting that you might need, and I'll work closely with Joe, of course, and with Lisa as we kind of move through this, to make sure we have all of our documentation on the backend, so when they go to do the auditing, we'll have all of that in place.
All right.
They're attaching resolutions, if they have one, if it's underneath one of the blanket resolutions, like the one you approved today. But then, if it's not, something like that, if there's other things that are attached or related to it, if there's a contract, we'll certainly make those as part of the packet as well.
Very good. Any questions or comments for Eric?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Eric. Commissioner Morgan, did you have anything under Finance Committee to update? Okay. Under Administrative Services Committee, we have an action item, and that's to approve the annual GIS grant funding in our local agreement with MAPPA. This is for $55,000. Mr. Schoenlow is present, if anybody has any questions for him. I hear a motion to approve, and a second from Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments to this item? Then could we please have the vote?
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Weekly personnel report, legislative issues, hopefully nothing going on there. So this brings us to our last discussion item, an employment fair chance policy in practice. And at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to Commissioner Borgeson. This is her item. This is on for discussion only this morning, but hopefully we can follow up soon with possible action.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And today I bring forth a resolution, and way of background, we've talked about this a lot, about reentering programs, and how do we help individuals reentering our communities to make sure that they are successful. And we know that one of the utmost key points of being successful in reentering is getting a job. We also know that sometimes our hiring practices and processes get in the way of that. And so I had some discuss, excuse me, I had some discussions with Levon Stennis, who you all know, who runs a reentry program very successfully in the community. And she worked with me to come up with a resolution to put before you to see if we wanted to move forward with becoming a background-friendly county, is basically what I'm looking at this as. Along with Levon, and she'll say a few words, we will also have Roberta Toni Myers, who is a national expert. She's the director of our state strategy, of state strategy and reentry. She runs the National Helping Individuals with Criminal Records Reentry Through Employment, also known as the Hire Network. And she is, she also executes strategic state-based criminal justice and health advocacy goals and priorities for the Legal Action Center. And she is just a wealth of information, provided good background information, but was very, I'm very happy to have her with us today. And again, she'll give some remarks as well. And then Jasmine Harris is also another community expert on reentry and runs a reentry program as well here in the community, and she will also say a few words. And so I would ask Levon to come up and start us kind of off with any background information you would like to say. Again, I can't thank Levon enough for what she does in the community and keeping us looking at things to how we can be a part of bettering our processes for individuals who are reentering. I mean, we do the Second Chance Act programming, we do have reentry stuff over at our corrections facility, programs within our youth facility, we work with you and individuals that are coming back from our prison facilities. But this, I think, as we have called it, is the game changer. If we become kind of the catalyst to doing this, looking at this, and changing our processes, we then could actually have some conversations with our community business partners to do the same. And so again, I welcome you and thank you for what you do, and thank you for bringing this forward to us to discuss. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. Levon Stennis Williams, 8919 North 56th Avenue Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. I'm speaking on behalf of myself personally and as the executive director of a reentry program. And while this is labeled as a fair chance, it's actually a first step, because I do believe that if this resolution were to be enacted, the county would then lead by example to encourage other people. And I go back to my own personal story. In 2011, when I returned back to this community after serving a federal prison sentence, I was embraced by Commissioner Borgeson and Commissioner Rogers to help me get back, to help me open the doors to opportunities. While many people called them second chances, for many of us, they were first chances. Unfortunately, for some people, they did not have the education and the background and the connection that I had. But I do know that it was the opportunities, the fair chances that the commissioners gave me, that allowed me to go ahead and then develop probably one of the best reentry programs in the state of Nebraska. We serve over 1,000 people, and one of the first contracts I received was to work with Douglas County Correction. And that was a game changer for me. I became a volunteer providing reentry support, which then allowed me to leverage that to become a state grantee under the VLS, which we serve over 1,000 people in all state prisons. We teach reentry classes, and we help them come back into society and start their reentry planning. And then it allowed me then to become almost a subject matter expert on this, and I got introduced to other counties. And so in addition to working in Douglas County, I also work in four different counties across the country, helping develop reentry programming. So I know the benefit firsthand when we're given fair chance opportunities, when people do not use our sentence against us and allow us to be able to overcome what we may have done to get ourselves sent to prison. But what's more important is that providing fair chance opportunities are not only a moral obligation to communities who want to empower their people, to make sure everybody is successful, but it becomes an economic necessity. We recycle everything in our communities but people. When a person, especially a parent, serves a prison sentence and then cannot come out and earn a decent living to support their families, what we then do is set up a pattern for what's called intergenerational crime and incarceration. Yes, there are no statistics that say that a parent of a kid of an incarcerated parent will automatically go to prison, but the odds are against them being successful if their parent cannot come out and successfully support them and provide the things, the things that you may take for granted, you're able to provide for yourself. I know in addition to being able to come out and get back on my feet and support my child, who went on to finish college, she went on to become a lawyer, got a master's degree, and currently works for the county in a legal position. I know that was important, because I was able to come out and help contribute to her success. So she is now an attorney, and she has started a scholarship to help kids of incarcerated parents go to college. This is her money that she's using. So the opportunities that Douglas County gave me in 2011 have helped to set forth a pattern, this behavior, and been able to support my family and also been able to help me support other people. But what's also important is the fact that I now employ five individuals. Three of us are formerly incarcerated. In addition to me, another one is buying a home. So I hope you can see, your investment in just giving me a chance has paid off, you know, thousandfold in this community. But then there are hundreds of people like me who come out every year, come back to Douglas County, who need this opportunity. This is why this first chance opportunity resolution is necessary. And there are some who may have concerns about, well, how can we hire someone with criminal backgrounds or felonies in certain positions? This resolution is not a mandate, it's a recommendation, it's a commitment. So it has, it gives you the discretion, it gives department heads the discretion to look what the, or to take what they call the nature test, the nature of the charge, the nature of the time since the conviction, and the nature of the position. So you still have the discretion to take all those factors into account before you hire a person. What this says, though, is that you will not just have a blanket ban on people with felony backgrounds. You will look at people like me. You will look at people like other people, the five people who work for me, and you will give us an opportunity. And so I know that there are two other great speakers that are coming behind me, and I wanted to just say, I appreciate you all for moving forward, at least just introducing this. And I hope that you all will support in terms of passing it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Levon. And if I may, could I introduce Roberta Toni Myers to the floor and have her say a few words for us? Roberta, Toni?
Thank you. I'm sorry I have so many names. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson and Levon Stennis Williams of Reconnect for inviting me to testify before the commission about the Fair Chance Employment Resolution that is being considered. This resolution, if adopted, would put Douglas County into the company of 36 states, including Nebraska, the District of Columbia, and over 150 cities and counties that have adopted a fair chance policy. Criminal records have become the scarlet letters of our time. They are brands that rest on the backs of millions of people. Many skilled and highly educated people with criminal records are unemployed and overlooked because they have been relegated to a new underclass that is excluded from participating in our highly competitive labor market, simply... in our highly competitive labor market simply because they have a record. Stigma and discrimination keep public and private employers from experiencing a diverse and inclusive workforce because many employers or human resource managers have not learned some of the best practices around risk analysis and risk mitigation when reviewing criminal history information. And Levon mentioned a little bit about some of the content of that. And in the end, they adopt practices that are demoralizing to individuals we expect to pay their debts to society. And it's costly to society because these individuals are relegated to being tax users instead of taxpayers. So I asked the board to look at this resolution through two lens, public safety and economics. There are three key elements to success that typically take place when someone can successfully reintegrate and remain crime-free after a criminal conviction, securing a good job that pays a living wage, securing safe and affordable housing, and advancing their education. If a formerly incarcerated person cannot get a decent job, education, or housing, it becomes very difficult to lead a productive life. And sadly, 68% of these individuals are likely to recidivate within three years if they do not get opportunities that Levon talked about that she was given. However, success is usually predicated on securing a good job. The Crime and Justice Institute said it best, "Employment fills a vital need for most individuals. It provides income, social connection, and feelings of societal contribution and self-worth." One study showed that two years, two years after release, employed people were more than twice as likely to have not committed any additional crimes when compared to formerly incarcerated people who were unable to secure employment. Recent research has found that allowing job seekers with criminal records to arbitrarily be excluded from the labor market has long-term costs to families, communities, and the national economy, which loses up to $87 billion, billion with a B, dollars in gross domestic product each year from excluding workers with criminal records. In 2011, in 2011, a study that looked at the economic benefits of employing qualified formerly incarcerated individuals in Philadelphia found that if the city had hired 100 formerly incarcerated people, it would increase its tax contributions by $1.9 million, boost sales tax revenue by $770,000, and save $2 million annually by reducing criminal justice costs associated with recidivism. And a study in Washington State showed that providing job training and employment to formerly incarcerated individuals returned more than $2,600 to taxpayers per person. This resolution would position Douglas County to serve as an example to the private business sector. It would show that the county, as a public employer, practices what it preaches about being an equal opportunity employer. Finally, research by economists confirmed that hiring people with criminal records is smart business because retention rates are higher, turnover is lower, and employees with criminal records are considered more loyal. Adopting this resolution, as you've heard already, is a first step in leveling the playing field in the job market to give every applicant, even those who have had past run-ins with the law, an opportunity to apply for a good-paying job. This resolution does not eliminate the county's right to inquire about or consider an applicant's criminal history. It simply ensures the Human Resources Department does three things. One, objectively assess the relevance of conviction records to the duties associated with specific county positions. Two, properly screen all candidates for employment using individualized assessments that consider skills, qualifications, and evidence of rehabilitation when a candidate has a record. And three, expands the pool of qualified candidates that have diverse backgrounds and experiences by eliminating opportunities for bias to creep in before individuals have an opportunity to fully compete for a position. I hope the board will adopt this resolution and remember this one thing, that none of us are the worst thing we have ever done. I do thank you for this opportunity and hope that you will move this forward.
Thank you so much, Toni. Very good words of wisdom, and your expertise is much appreciated this morning. The last speaker is Jasmine Harris. And then after Jasmine, the chair will turn it over for comments from the board and questions. So Jasmine, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jasmine Harris, 5014 Pratt Street, 68104. Thank you for all having us here today to speak on this resolution. I'll start off by saying, this isn't anything new that the county would be doing outside of what they should do. In 2014, Governor Heinemann signed into law on Nebraska statute 48202 that no public employer shall ask an applicant to disclose information regarding their criminal history until the employer has determined the applicant meets the minimum employment qualification. And that's fair chance hiring right there. It's removing the box from the application that has people to say whether or not they have a criminal history. When you get beyond that point and a person can prove to you that they have the qualifications, the skill set, the mindset, that they can do the job, then that is when background checks can come in. And I, and I thank you all for bringing this resolution because then it sets the parameters around where those background checks are even necessary. So I work as the Director of Public Policy and Advocacy for a nonprofit called RISE. We work with individuals who are currently incarcerated and who are coming out of incarceration. Our program is a six-month program that we operate in Nebraska Department of Corrections Facility. And we work on employment readiness, character development, and entrepreneurship. So the first three months of our program are really working with individuals on how do they speak about their criminal history when they go into an interview? And then digging into their character as a person and how they can relate that moving forward by changing their thought processes and realizing that they have strength. How can we continue to ensure that people will take that as they reenter when our society tells them to get a job and be productive community members, but then relegate them to jobs that do not have livable wages, there are no advancing? And if they have the education, they can get into the good job. So what we're asking is that you support this resolution so that people have those opportunities and those chances to continue to move forward. Toni mentioned a lot of the statistics that I was going to bring up. 90% of individuals who are incarcerated will come home. She talked about the recidivism rate. Nebraska has a 33, a little over 33% recidivism rate. If we can get people good-paying jobs, that recidivism rate will go down. That has been proven time and time again. The individuals who have been rearrested after incarceration, 80% of them are unemployed. So if we can knock down that unemployment rate by giving people those chances that they deserve, because they've come out, they've paid their debt to society and are trying to move in the right direction. So we have to take off those invisible handcuffs and allow people to be able to advance into these positions. I'll tell you my personal story. I didn't have a felony conviction. I had a misdemeanor. And I was out of a job for a year and a half because of my misdemeanor conviction. If I am trying to get the same job that I know that I can do that I've applied for and being denied, how am I supposed to continue to move forward and take care of my family, things of that nature? So we have to begin to ensure that we are putting in place those policies and procedures that will ensure that there are no biases that are coming in to make sure that people have those chances to continue moving forward. One of the other things I want to talk about that the resolution brings up is that it makes sure that you will not use arrest records or anything like that. I don't know how many times you hear of the stories that something isn't even on a person's record. They didn't even run an actual background check, but they went to a Google search, a Ben Verified or something like that. We need to ensure that these procedures there protect the individuals who are applying for those jobs. Because someone could have been arrested and not convicted, and we cannot base our decision on those arrest records. And lastly, what I'll talk about is our young professionals. In America, one in three people will have been arrested by the time they're 23 years old. If we are trying to replace our workforce, we have to ensure that we are not holding some of these small things against people as they're moving forward. So I think this resolution really puts in place some of those practices that will help the county become background-friendly and be that example for the city of Omaha and for private employers, because that is something that we're still fighting for at the state level. Again, I hope you support this resolution. Thank you.
So I think, thank you, Jasmine, very much for being here as well. Levon kind of hit on this, but one of the things that hit home for me in reading a lot of the materials on this was a father who gets a job because of his criminal, who can't get a job because of his criminal record, can't support his family. His children grow up in poverty and receive unequal access to education and job opportunities. The cycle of inequity continues and the community suffers. That's a pretty profound statement. And I think that, again, of all of the things that we talk about, really on a weekly basis about our criminal justice systems, that really does hit home with all of the things that we talk about, the things that we're trying to make a difference in and in, and impact the lives of the people that we serve. And again, a couple other points is that the studies show that employment is the single most important factor in reducing recidivism on top of the other two that Toni talked about. But again, I bring this resolution forth so that we can really begin to assess the candidate and not the record, looking at our, our practices and procedures to see that we kind of keep that at the forefront. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing the time for the presentation of the resolution and comments from the experts.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda and bringing it to our attention. I'm a little embarrassed here that the state of Nebraska's already done it. I'd like to think we're a little more progressive than them, but golly, if they've done it, by all means, we need to be catching up. When you look at the chronic labor shortage we have in our community, to take a whole group and say, but this group is not eligible to help you address this labor shortage, I appreciate your bringing this to our attention and hope that we will follow through in short order. At this point, I would open up for any questions or comments from the public commissioners. Commissioner Kellner?
Thank you. I just have a few questions probably for our county attorney relative to some of the language. And so... Good morning.
Good morning.
You're our county attorney.
I'm a deputy county attorney, Commissioner, as you know.
And your name is?
Teresa, you're at county attorney's office.
Thank you. Did you or the county attorney draft this resolution?
I'm no, the short answer is no. I'm not familiar with this resolution. I saw it for the first time yesterday.
Okay. Had you had a chance to look it over before this morning?
I looked it over briefly yesterday.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions relative to some of the terminology in here. And, you know, it's kind of term of art type stuff. In the resolution repeatedly refers to, quote, "records," unquote. And presumably, you can read on down towards the end where it finally mentions criminal records. But it seems to be a little nebulous for the first, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, six or so references to just records. I mean, we all have records, I guess. And would it make sense to clarify what kind of records we're talking about at the, at the very outset so that it's clear throughout that we're talking criminal records?
I suppose so, Commissioner. And I'm sure when the policy is drafted, I'm sure that they'll work with our office to add greater specificity.
Okay. The other phrase in here that I guess I'm not familiar with is priority conviction. What is a priority conviction?
Where are you at in the document, if I may ask?
Oh, it's down towards the, it's like the fourth from the last bullet point on the second page. And the context is, "The county shall consider job-related convictions, taking into account the length of time since the offense occurred, such that no person shall be disqualified from employment solely or in part because of a priority conviction, unless it is a job-related conviction."
I'm not, if that is a term of art, I apologize. I'm not familiar with what that definition would be for a priority conviction.
Right. I don't think I've come across that in the practice of criminal law. You know, perhaps there again, you know, a more precise definition would be...
Commissioner, Ms. Stennis just whispered in my ear that there's a typo, there's a typographical error there, and it should be prior conviction, not priority.
Oh, prior.
And that certainly, I think, would make more sense, so.
Okay. And I think that Ms. Stennis also mentioned that this resolution constitutes a recommendation, not a mandate. Is that your interpretation of the force of the resolution?
I think it will depend on how the wording of the policy is. I think that the, there's force in the very, bottom of the very first page, it says that there shall enact a policy, but I think that the policy itself will have to dictate the force of the employment situation going forward.
Okay. Just procedurally, then, does that come back before us for...
I don't know the answer to that. I'm unclear on the policy, if it's a directive or a request perhaps to civil service. So if it's, if it's a request to civil service, then civil service would take up that rule and draft it and then possibly pass it.
Okay. I don't believe we have an HR person here, but presumably it goes to them and then comes back in some form for...
No, the Civil Service Commission governs the employees that are subject to civil service. I assume if, if the rule is, the policy is created and passed by civil service, it would go into the Civil Service Policy Manual. The board would have the option to pass a resolution governing employees who are under the board's direction and not under civil service's direction. And that is, there are, there are a few employees that do fit that category.
So this would apply to those employees, not all employees, or all employees, not those employees?
This resolution before you today, I don't know the answer to that. I assume that the idea would be to try to cover as many employees as you possibly can. And so I assume, but don't know, that this would be a request to civil service to take up this issue and possibly pass a policy that would govern several, civil service employees. And the board could also look at possibly drafting and passing a similar resolution. Hopefully, they'd be the same, just for administrative purposes and folks who have both employees in their departments. And the board could consider passing a resolution related to employees under its purview.
Okay. I see my lights on. I do have some more, so I'll wait for my next opportunity.
All right. Does anybody else have questions or comments to the resolution, Levon?
I just wish to clarify my comment that I made is that this is like any other affirmative effort. It's saying, the resolution is saying that, that the county will take forth this effort, but then it preserves the right for, as I said, the nature test, the nature of the conviction, the nature of the time passed since the conviction, and the nature of the job applying for. So each department head or who, HHR, would have their discretion to take those factors in consideration before they hire a person. I also would like to distinguish this from the state's effort. The state passed a "ban the box." This goes beyond "ban the box." And so it's a lot stronger, and it's where the trend is emerging across the country now to take this beyond "ban the box." "Ban the box" is a Band-Aid approach. This now gives more, I guess, meat or leverage to... This now gives more, I guess, meat or leverage to efforts to open up employment for those of us with formal, former criminal convictions.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it, Levon. Further questions or comments?
This is Karen Butch. May I speak?
Go ahead, Karen.
Yes, this is Karen Butch. I'm the HR director. I, I do want to say a few things. The county did enact the ban the box some time ago, and I, I agree with Levon's comments. It is our, my intent to take this as a policy before the Civil Service Commission and ask them to take it into consideration. That policy will be brought forth, and if the Civil Service Commission would pass the policy, then at that point in time, we have typically brought those policies back to the county board to see if they would like to pass them to apply, as Teresa Yurick said, to other departments that are non-civil service, that are under the authority of the county board.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Bergerson.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a point on that, is that that is the process, but I do intend to bring this back because this is a big issue for this board, and again, that's why I'm bringing it forth for discussion today. And again, our process will follow, but we'll bring it back for what we need to do as a board, but also I think it's important that we, as a board, embrace, if the civil service does adopt this, that we embrace it as well.
Thank you for that. Mr. Myers, I, I'm anxious to hear your thoughts on this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. As this board is aware, prior to my appointment as director, I spent about 10 years developing programs, working with Levon and many others, to promote opportunities for individuals who are reentering our community from incarcerated settings. I wanted to, to speak today briefly, more out of transparency in response to this than, than in any way opposing it. I do support this resolution. We have a couple of things that we need to consider at the Department of Corrections that perhaps other county departments don't need to have as, as high of priority. One, we have requirements for accreditation, for our, for American Correctional Association accreditation to consider. We also have the Prison Rape Elimination Act, as well as regulations by ICE and the U.S. Marshals regarding our hiring processes and who can work as a corrections officer. One of the things that's very, that I realized soon after I became director, when we were very short-staffed, is our hiring process took way too long, and we had a lot of bottlenecks, and we worked very hard to overcome those bottlenecks and make it more efficient, and our staffing has, has recovered significantly since making those changes. For the position of correctional officers only, I think it's important that we are able to maintain that efficiency, and by interviewing someone and bringing them all the way through the process, only to discover that they have a record that we can't hire them for anyway, pushes back against that progress that we've made in our hiring efficiency. So we would ask that, in a policy that's formulated as a result of this resolution, that the positions of correctional officers, due to the unique nature of their job, the unique nature of the qualifications and regulations and standards that we have to abide by, are, follow our current practice, which is, we do, we have the ability to do our own criminal background checks within the Department of Corrections. We do hire an occasional corrections officer who has a background check. We use the nature test and to see if that individual, if enough time has passed, i- if the crime was benign enough not to be able to use against them in their duties as a corrections officer. We are, we are, we still, we are already doing that, and we pledge to continue to do that, to look at each individual. But we do have a significant number of, of individuals who do apply, who have criminal backgrounds, and for, for me to ask my staff, we interview hundreds of, of folks every two months or so in order to, to end up with a class of about 20. To add on all of the individuals blindly, if you will, who we couldn't hire anyway, would slow that process down. And as you know, we are a high-stress, high-turnover environment, and hiring efficiently is critical to us maintaining safe, safe staffing levels. All that being said, I do support this resolution, and it's vital that we, and I, and really, I'm going to take the step and say that I won't ask to be this exception to be applied to anything other than correctional officers. Our other positions in the department, we typically hire one or two folks at a time to fill vacancies. With correctional officers, we're hiring a large number of people at once, and that really, to me, is the distinction, is just losing that efficiency that we've gained. So overall, I support this resolution. I would want to apply it in my department for every position other than a correctional officer position, and it's vital that we, as a county, and as county departments, are included in these efforts, that we, we, we should bear the burden that someone's criminal history has to have a direct tie to their ability to do the job that they're applying for. So overall, like I said, I do support this resolution. I just wanted to be transparent in terms of our hopes of how we hope to apply it to our continued hiring of correctional officers. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that perspective, Mr. Myers. Mr. Bloomingdale.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So with the, with all of the discussion...
Patrick, if you'd introduce yourself for the world.
Sheriff Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator.
Thank you.
So with all the discussion, I would recommend in that first, now therefore be it resolved paragraph at the bottom of the first page, the county, instead of saying the county shall enact, say, "This board, now therefore be it resolved that this board hereby requests that the Civil Service Commission enact a fair-chance policy," et cetera, and then, after the last bullet point on the second page, state, "Be it further resolved that should the Civil Service Commission enact this policy, comma, it shall come back before this board for consideration of application to all non-civil service employees under this board's direct authority."
That, that makes sense, although I think now we're getting into making sausage, and, and these are the, the word-smithing efforts that I think we'll be taking on as, as we try to refine and polish this and bring it back for the board's consideration. So appreciate your good thoughts on that, Patrick.
Your bet.
Thank you. Other questions or comments to the resolution before us?
Mr. Duda.
Commissioner Kellner.
Thank you. You know, along those lines, I guess, just for clarification purposes, I, I'd make the recommendations that we amend it to reflect criminal records rather than just generic records throughout, and correct the typographical error regarding priority convictions, which is correctly prior convictions. I, you know, spent a number of years working for an organization called the Criminal Diversion and Outreach Organization, AFL-CIO. Specific task was to help felons coming out of incarceration find employment in our community. Subsequently, I spent the better part of a decade working for the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, representing misdemeanants and felons in the criminal justice system. And as a result, I have great sympathy for the sentiments contained herein. I, you know, think that this is a step in the right direction. Our intent should be to make it as good as possible, and so the amendments that I'm suggesting are, are simply to clarify what we're talking about so that it is clear to everybody. We're not talking about your medical records. We're not talking about your social security records. We're specifically talking about criminal records. The point made by Mr. Myers relative to exemption for correction employees, you know, raises another, I guess, concern that is addressed here kind of obliquely in the third to the last bullet point, where it says, "If an applicant has been convicted of an offense that is directly related to a position sought," and, you know, that's a real concern. We've had that problem in front of us, where because of the lack of a records check, someone who had a, had a prior conviction on a specific point relative to their employment with us was employed, and that's, that's of concern. You know, if we have people that are handling money and they have theft convictions, if we have people that are involved with children under our jurisdiction and they have sex crimes convictions, and the corrections concerns, and certainly probably shared with public safety at the sheriff's office, would be legitimate questions to ask, I guess, and so hopefully we will see some clarification when it comes back from the Civil Service Commission relative to the legitimate use. But, I mean, by and large, the idea of reintegrating people who may have made a mistake in their life back into our society is in all of our best interests, and not only would reduce recidivism, which is of great cost to us, but the human damage caused by people not being able to re-enter our civil society after paying their debt is incalculable. And so I support the idea of helping people rehabilitate themselves and help them become productive citizens of our society. We just need to do it as, as well as we can, and I, I recommend these friendly amendments to help improve the process that we're, that we're set up upon here. So I would make those recommendations like Mr. Bloomingdale did to improve the language going forward. It certainly needs to be specified what records we're talking about, and the typographical errors need to be corrected.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sure when we refine it, we will correct the typographical error and clarify the records. Further, further conversation to the discussion item, this is your opportunity, sir.
Good morning. I'm going to introduce myself a little differently than your regular procedure because it's more appropriate for today. I'm Ford, and I'm an alcoholic. I lived in a recovery house for alcoholics, addicts, and gamblers for four years, and the biggest problem we had with residents in that house was convicts who couldn't find a job because of their conviction. They, our, our normal rent was 300 to 350, depending on which house in the organization was the residential house, and there were so many that were booted out of their house because of their inability to pay their rent. And that, of course, set them on the road, as, as you have indicated and your testifiers have indicated, of, towards recidivism. It also caused many of them to fall off the wagon, or as we in the programs call it, slipping, and it destroyed all the progress that they had made during their terms of incarceration. And if they had just been able to find a job, establish a sense of worthfulness and value, and I, I watched many capable, intelligent, talented, good-hearted men crumble because they couldn't find a job. And often, it was not a huge crime. It was just the record, the criminal record, that they carried with them. And so anything that would enable future generations to escape that revolving door, I would be in favor of, and I think most people who understood what's at stake would also favor. And I think it's partially the responsibility of this board, of the city council, of the state legislature, any governing body, to take that action to enable it. Our prisons and jails are not departments of correction. They should become such, and our corporations, there's a concept out there of corporate citizenship, and they need to start exercising that and employ people who need to. Somebody mentioned fathers who have a criminal record, and the system doesn't just punish the father, it punishes their children, their spouses, and something's got to be done to bring social justice to the system, too. And I'm not very good at wrapping up, so I'm just going to stop there.
All right. Let me ask, for the record, if I could, your, your name, sir?
Pardon?
Your name, sir, just for the record.
Well, my name is Stanford Momarts Brown.
Thank you, sir.
I go by Ford for short.
Fine. Thank you for sharing that perspective with us. Appreciate it, sir.
And if I may speak?
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. When I had my store, I hired a lot of people who were on probation, work release, who were referred to me by social services, including teenagers who were, uh, referred to me by friends I had in high school who were working with teenage social services. One of the issues I had with people, and, and the gentleman just before me brought this up, halfway houses, quarterway houses, many times required their employees to be home by and in the house by seven o'clock. Well, I need somebody to work till nine, or at least until six, but because of public transportation, they can, could not get home by seven, which created a tremendous burden to me as an employer. Now, I have to admit, I had plenty of failures. Many people who just didn't want to put the effort into being rehabilitated or just didn't fit, but I also had some wonderful, fantastic successes, and I'm very proud. And when I go to bed at night, I glow because of these successes. And I, I would try to get other companies to hire some of the people I had working with me. One was UNMC, the, the HR person that would call me and say, "Mark, does this person work with you?" I said, "Yes." "Does he have, he's got a record?" "Yes." We usually don't hire people with records, but tell me about them. And I would tell them about them, and in three different instances, they hired them. And the same thing with Kellogg's Manufacturing, and once with Mutual of Omaha. And as I said, it's very satisfying, and as far as I know, I haven't been in communication with any of these people since I closed my store in 2011, but as far as I know, they are still successful in their new fields. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Kraft. Levon, did you have...
This is my final comment. I have three, three points I want to make. Words do matter, so please go in, we're not felons, we're not convicts. We're formerly incarcerated men and women who have served our sentence, and we deserve to be referred to as that. Just like when you pay your home off, you're not an ex-mortgage or you're a homeowner. So we do know that words do matter. Secondly, we want to make sure that you, going forward, that the exception has not become the rule. People that, who live in primarily Commissioner Rogers' district oftentimes take plea agreements. They're innocent, but they don't have the resources to fight the charge, so we do have to dig deeper beyond just what that conviction or what that says. That's why I say we must look at the nature of the charge, and we must pause, and I do agree with Mike Myers, that there are some positions that should be exempt, but let's not...
but let's not just stop with what that criminal record says, because when you dig deep, poor and minority people oftentimes take plea agreements for charges that they did not, the offense in which they did not commit. Finally, I hope that as you're going forward, that you will use the expertise of Roberta Myers. She is here, she's available for us in terms of crafting the best language to address all the concerns that have been raised today. She is a tremendous resource. I happened to meet her several years ago at the Department of Justice in her national hire network. This is what they do. And Commissioner Burgerson has had a chance to be on a Zoom training with her, so I would just ask, as you're moving forward and you're trying to get the right language, that you do reach out to her for your expertise and guidance. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Levon. I find this a fascinating and interesting discussion. I will turn it back to you, Commissioner Burgerson, if you have any concluding remarks or anything.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to thank Levon and Tony and Jasmine for being here, and definitely will be reaching out to them. Karen Bush has been instrumental in crafting this resolution and using the tools that were given to us to do so. And we will continue to do that and reach out to the experts. One of the things that I do, we have people in the community, too, that are here before us today, that are, that work with the populations that we're talking about. And so I think, again, making sure that we work with the experts that can help us. And even, I'm going to go as far as, even if we do hire someone and there's a slip, there are experts out there that can help us. There are experts that are probably working with these individuals or had worked with these individuals for years before they came out of the system and began their re-entry. So again, we have experts in our community that I know will definitely help us. And I just, we have done a lot. I think this really just shows we're not satisfied, if you will, with what we've done, but we continue to move forward and try to make things better for individuals that have these roadblocks in front of them. And lastly, I'll get on my soapbox, because I think if we can show hope for individuals and start to, to kind of flood, if you will, social media and media with hope, you will have individuals that will be looking and have a different mindset of looking at things, because they are given hope. And again, I can't, I can't begin to understand, because I have never walked in those shoes, but what I can do as a policymaker is listen and then put something into place that will give individuals hope and hopefully build on their success, and that will help break the cycle of what we see going on in our county today. So again, I appreciate the willingness to look at this. We will be reaching out to the experts. We thank you so much, Levon. Again, thank you so much for being there and bringing stuff forward for us to look at. Karen and I will definitely be reaching back out as we look at policy for the civil service and then bringing it back to this Board as well. So again, thank you for the engagement today. I really appreciate it.
This has been a fascinating conversation. The comment was made that the city and state should be doing it, too. I don't care about that. We don't run them. We run the county. But to me, the county is the most logical entity to be leading the way on this, between the fact that most of our budget is criminal justice, we run the jail, but we're the caregiver of last resort. And so this is just such a good logical fit. I appreciate your bringing it forward. I look forward to refining the words and getting it down to where everybody is comfortable with it and bringing it back for our consideration. I want to thank all of our speakers this morning for this enlightening discussion. Thank you. That's all I'm aware of that we have this morning. We have no need for executive session. Yay! And so therefore, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And we don't vote on this one with no exec session. I finally get to use my line. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn can signify by leaving; those opposed can stay. Thank you all for a good meeting.